Ed, are you ready, sir? The provisional township high school regular special meeting of the Board of Education will now come to order on December fourteenth, two thousand and twenty at approximately. Six forty-five P M. Ms. Grant, please call the roll.
Mrs. Patterson. Here. Is Grant here, Mr. Volkeris?
Here.
Mr. Wagner?
Here.
Mrs. Kelly?
Present.
Mrs. Medina? Mr. Alexander?
Here.
We have a forum.
Great. Please stand for a moment of silence and the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ms. Grant, if you'd be so kind as to read the mission statement?
Through expectations of excellence and by providing equitable educational opportunities to empower each student, our graduates are prepared for careers and to serve as contributing members of a dynamic global society.
Great. Uh, we are in, we are in receipt of a few citizens' comments and we'll be reading them, holding them in advance and reading them at the January meeting. Thank you for your comments and they will be addressed. Uh, Mr. Stark King, are you ready to roll?
I would like to introduce Carl Hammons from Miller Cooper.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for having me. I look a lot better, uh, but you can see my stubble, you know, I, I wish I could, like, I could show you how I'm doing in the district two and I hear competition, but I can't.
Right.
Unfortunately. Um, but anyways, with that being said, I'm really happy to be here and see you all again. Um, you know, I am the manager on the district's financial state audit for the year fiscal twenty. So, um, you know, but as the partner above me, so I'm sort of project manager, you know, data and operations about it. Before I go into detail about a few of the deliverables that you're looking at, I'd like to just sort of frame the, uh, the status of things. You, you've probably noticed that the PDF state draft, right? I'd like to assure you, you know, um, what the process is, so the district will be, management will be approving said drafts basically tomorrow morning. And then at that point, the, um, Mr. Stark King and Dr. Henderson will sign what we call the management's representation letter, which is sort of the final piece for our files. And then at that point, um, the, the final can be rendered and then the A F R will be filed electronically, which is be satisfied since statutory deadline of December fifteenth. So I sort of want to, want to frame that. I don't want to cause any alarm by anyone seeing a draft stamp, okay? Any questions about that process? Excellent. So, um, the first deliverable I'd like to, to discuss is what we call our S A F S letter. It begins with the, uh, I think it has the, it's addressed a little there. It's a, I only have it electronically. The paper's a bit easier to be honest. Um, it says to the members of the Board of Education at the top, and there's a whole line that says our responsibility under auditing standards. That's the one we're talking about. That's it. You got it? Yep. Okay, so this is a letter that, um, all auditors send all boards at the end of the audit, sort of a status, what happened, what did we do, what did we find, if anything? And, you know, there's a lot of boilerplate information in here, but I'd like to review just a few highlights for you if I could. Uh, pages two and three. Are the auditing, uh, sorry, accounting standards applicable to the year under audit that we just finished and then the years coming up? This year was easy as far as audit accounting standards. It was simply delay every accounting standard, which is what you sort of see. It's the second to last paragraph. Gatsby statement number ninety-five was literally a postponement of everything else. And I think you can guess why they did that. They did that in light of, you know, um, the coronavirus pandemic. However, if you, if you keep going on page two and three, you can see the Gatsby's been very prolific in recent years and there is more than a full page of statements coming up in the, in the coming years. And of course, not all of them pertain to, uh, prior to District Two Oh Nine, however, there are, of course, are all kinds of governments out there, so the Gatsby has to write statements for all of those types of governments. Um, but the district and the auditors will of course be working together to successfully implement these and avoid any issues and, and delays. So, um, they, they should be well taken care of. But as you can see, they've been very prolific. The other highlight I'd like to point out in this letter is on page six, if you would turn. What you talk about on page six is if you found any adjustments or errors and I'm pleased to announce, you know, in. Oh, okay. The first paragraph right under that table, the last sentence says, there were no material corrected adjustments identified by us. And so there were no big adjustments or errors, in other words, that were identified. So I like to point that out. That's nice to read, you know? The table above it is simply just kind of a technicality because the district performed a comprehensive review of its capital asset records during the year. You know, equipment, vehicles, the buildings, which was actually quite good timing if you think about it with the master plan in progress. And, you know, you, you see this number here, five hundred and twenty-one thousand. That was essentially the net sort of reviewed adjustment for all past assets that the district had accumulated. Really not that bad considering how big your district is and how much equipment and building you have. So, again, that's just a professional standards thing. That is not a significant, um, number to your district, which is why it wasn't required to be adjusted in the financial statements. Okay? Any questions about this letter? Those are the highlights. Excellent. So then the next item we'd like to look at is the biggest one, the C financial statements. In front of it says annual financial report on it with the district's name on it. Now, the opinion, the auditor's opinion is really the result of everything we do, you know, all the tests, all the questions, all the late nights for Mr. Stark King and, and Ms. Miller in the business office. The end result is our auditor's opinion, which, since this is a draft, is not currently in there, but I can discuss with you the way it stands right now, which, of course, I don't expect any change if you hang down tomorrow morning. It's what we call an unmodified opinion, which is the, the best opinion. If it was modified, so to speak, that would mean there was an error or irregularity detected. The planned opinion is unmodified. It's, it's the best opinion with the best assurance, okay? Means the district, the district's report has complied with generally accepted accounting principles. Okay? If you turn to page fourteen and fifteen, I would just like to get on some highlights of results. Pages fourteen and fifteen are what we call the, the district-wide statements. So, looking at the district almost as in the format of a, a publicly traded company, for example, you know, the, the capital assets are in there. The long-term debt is in there. So this basically shows what's left after you consider all of the assets and all of the liabilities. It sort of shows the residual, which, you know, in a, in a company setting is called, is called retained earning or equity, but a school district is called net position. Sort of the resources that are available that aren't, you know, needed for a liability or servicing some debt or something. And that is fifty-one point six million at the end of fiscal year twenty, as you can see all the way to bottom there, okay? Now, page fifteen is really the income statement, sort of quote-unquote the proponent loss, so to speak. I mean, it, it, it's the income statement. And, um, what we can see is the net position increased this year nine point two million. So, now for the most, you might be asking, how did that happen? Why did that happen? For the most part, uh, school district, it means that your facility improvements and your equipment additions are keeping up with the depreciation, because depreciation is constantly taking them down. So if you're adding to your, your buildings and your equipments and things, it's, it's, uh, keeping up with that. So, that's part of it. It's obviously not all of it, but it, it's a big part of it. So as you know, you're doing the projects right now, so that's, that's a big part of it. Okay?
That's the nine, one, nine, five, eight, six, eight?
Correct. Yes.
Where is it at, Rodney?
Uh, bottom of page fifteen.
The bottom of page fifteen.
Ninety-nine million, one hundred and fifty-five thousand.
Change in net position.
Correct. Change in net position. Correct. Yep. So again, full accrual, long-term basis looking, the debt, the capital assets, everything, depreciation. The district has increased its position nine point two million. It also includes things like the pension compensation. So there's a, a lot going in there. So keep that in mind. There's a lot going in there, okay? Correct. Now, what might be a little more interesting, to be honest, is page seventeen. It's really interesting how different these statements look. Now, page seventeen is just looking at the funds, fund balance, so to speak. Now, the funds are a short-term focus. They don't consider capital assets. They don't consider the bonds. They don't consider the pension liabilities. It's, it's a short-term focus. So paying payroll, paying invoices, things like that, like the day-to-day operations, so to speak. And as you can see there, the district's total fund balances are one point two, one, one hundred and two point eight million in the lower right-hand corner. So what that means is the district's cash, its receivables, such as property taxes, um, minus its accounts payable and things like that, leaves a residual of one point, one hundred and two point eight million. And a lot of that is, is capital money for the project, so to speak. So, you know, there's, there's a little bit in all the funds, but a lot of it is in the capital fund. I believe it's about sixty million. Correct. About sixty-one million of it is capital, which means the rest of it is more what they call operational funds, education, transportation, things like that, operations and maintenance, okay? Now, on page twenty-one, we'll show you the changes from the prior. Again, it's in the lower right-hand corner.
Which page?
Page twenty-one, let's see. Lower right-hand corner, change in fund balance. I think it's actually split pages. You might have to have, like, you have twenty next to it to sort of see the, the title.
It's at the top of twenty-two, I think. The net change in fund balances.
Okay.
Total governmental funds.
Correct.
It's at the top of twenty-two.
Oh, okay.
It's the number of purposes.
I think, I think I was working on. Was it twenty?
It's both places.
Both? Oh, okay. Okay. Oh, twenty-two's coming up. I'll get to ninety-two. Sure. So, so page twenty-two, lower right-hand corner, the district had a decrease in fund balances of two point three million this year. Interesting how you see the increase on the district-wide focus of an increase of nine point five, and then on the government funds, you see a decrease of two point three. Again, the funds are a very short-term focus, paying bills, uh, paying payroll, things like that, funding, you know, the current funding of the pension, not the long-term focus. So, again, a capital asset on the fund level, when you're spending money on building, that's an expense, and that's why you're seeing a decrease on these. What you can do is you can break up that change based on the funds. So, for example, you can look at the general fund, which is where the teacher's payroll is paid, a lot of the general bills are paid. The operations and maintenance fund, which is, of course, you know, maintaining those buildings. So you have to just sort of almost look at where the, where the, the total is split out the most, I guess. But the whole district went down two point three million.
It went down how much?
Two point three million as a whole. And it's, it's in different buckets, again, you know, general fund, transportation, et cetera, so. Yeah, a lot of it is in the capital projects fund, which again, the capital projects fund gets a huge, large influx of money in some years from a bond, per se, and then it has a large decrease when, when the facility master plan bills come in and things like that. So the revenues and expenditures don't necessarily line up, which is important to say. Okay? Any questions about that? I know that's kind of an interesting conversation. Okay. Now, again, to your comments about page, uh, twenty-two, Ms. Grant, that is, those, those schedules show the differences between those district-wide looks and those fund level looks. They show you exactly what changed.
Right, but the, the number at the top was those net change in total, net change in fund balances, total governmental funds, and it's at two point three. You're talking about on the page before, it's listed in the numbers, right, in the third column in the total?
Right. Yes, exactly.
So then on the next page, you're just explaining what it is.
Correct. It's explaining why the whole district-wide view was different than the, the fund current views. And then you'll see the pensions, the debt, things like that. The things that are more long-term focused, okay?
Yep.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Yep, no problem. Anything? You know, and then, and then page twenty-four is quite simply just the scholarship and the activity fund. We have, we have to report those too. Okay? That's what those are. Now, the next accounting standard is going to change those big time. We're gonna have to report those a lot differently. It's not necessarily a change for the district's internal records, per se. It's really just an external reporting focus. Again, Gatsby designs these things for all governments, okay, these standards. They don't necessarily have Illinois School District Activity Funds in mind when they write these standards. So, in a sense, what these standards are more applicable to is compare, uh, transparency around pensions and different things like that, treasurer's offices. However, the activity funds fall under the guidelines that the Gatsby states, so the reporting will change just a little bit next year. Okay? And that's the big change for next year. I want to keep moving along. Um, you know, page twenty-six is what we call our notes for the financial statements. There's probably more information in, in these next, you know, sixty pages or so than, than the rest of the report combined. I just want to, I don't want to go through all of it. It's a lot, but I want to hit on two highlights, which is page sixty-eight. Sixty-eight shows the changes in the capital assets. So you can see how your hard work on the facility master plan is going into the financial statements on this table here. I think it's kind of entered for myself. Okay? Page sixty-nine, right after it, long-term liabilities, the bonds, the pensions, everything like that. Any questions about those notes? I don't want to go too fast. Okay? Pages seventy-eight through eighty-seven are informational pages concerning the district's pensions, teacher retirement system, and the Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund, and the district's health care operating for retirees, which as you know, there's a state plan, T H I S, and then the district local plan, the local retirees' health plan for retirees. So there's information about how the district's keeping up with the funding for it and what the liability is doing from year to year. Okay? Again, I don't want anyone to be concerned when they see these numbers, especially the T H I S number. Again, the Gatsby writes these standards for all governments, okay? And with the way that Illinois is set up for these benefits, the accounting standards say that a portion of it has to be reflected on the district's financial statements. However, the current, uh, legal funding, whatever model that you want to talk about, I, I, I don't want you to think that you're gonna get a bill for this hundred billion dollars from Gatsby. I want that to be clear. You know, this is an accounting number. I want that to be clear. The actuary is calculated. Um, I don't want anyone to think that there's an invoice coming. I guess is what I'm trying to say, okay? Hope that helps a little bit. Pages eighty-eight through one sixteen are the budget-to-actual schedules for the individual funds. So you can see on a line-by-line basis to the state account level, okay, what happened from budget to actual. As you know, budget was amended, so they're both in there, okay? And there's some prior year information in there, forty-two, which is, is helpful to, to, to track trends. The highlight, I'd like, again, there's a lot in there. I'd like to hit on one highlight though, which is page ninety-seven. This is the, the total for the general fund, okay? Which is, is educational working cash and tort, okay? But of course, ninety-nine percent of the expenditures are, are educational fund. Now, on ninety-seven, as you can see, I think it's about two-thirds of the way down, you can see total expenditures, okay? The general fund ended at two point four million under budget for the year, which I think you can see, and I think it's the fourth column. Now, that excludes state pension contributions, which are awash, okay? They're, they're a net zero income effect in the district, but they're shown on the front statements, which makes it even more. So the, the expenditures that the district can control, who was under budget two point four million from the amended budget. Okay? And the other funds are, are showcased the same way. If you, if you'd like to look, it's all in there. So, okay? Now, the remaining pages of this report are miscellaneous informations about bonds, details of the student activity clubs, how they change over years, and, uh, the operating cost per tuition, or I'm sorry, the tuition cost per, per, per student is in there too. And that's pretty much the, the financial report. I'd like to pause. I know it's a lot of information and I don't expect any questions, but I'd like to pause if there aren't any specific ones.
Sir, real quick, I just, just one quick question. Can you, for, for the purposes of the public and the meeting's being recorded, I'm going to Family Dollar tomorrow and I get stopped and someone asks me, what was that meeting about? What would I say to my constituency to sum all of this up in maybe five minutes?
Yeah, five minutes, okay.
Or less?
Yeah, five minutes.
A sentence would be fine.
Yeah. I would say that the district's financial statements fairly represent its current condition.
Gotcha.
Yeah. And that the auditors did not have any material exceptions to that statement. That's exactly what I would say.
Material exception. Break that down for me.
So the auditors did not find any deviations from generally accepted accounting practices. So this, this report is comparable to a school district in New Jersey or Mississippi where Dr. Henderson's from. That, that's what, that's what it means. Okay?
Great. Perfect. Got my statement.
Okay, thank you. You can always email us if you want to talk.
Right. They got your phone number. I'll call you.
You do have a phone number. Give that to yourself.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Hammons. Uh, we did send a, another report to the board by email this afternoon. We talked about, um, some areas of deficiency. We, we think of them as areas of growth. Uh, improvements that we've made over the last year from the prior year's deficiencies. We've addressed many of them. Some of them were a little more difficult to address in the COVID environment. I wanted to give you an opportunity to ask questions about that, um, report if you had any tonight. You can certainly take them, um, you know, by email through the superintendent's office if you want to ask them at another time. I am prepared to discuss them tonight though, too, in case you have.
He said this came this, this afternoon?
Yes. It was, it was, uh, it was probably right around noon, I think. In an email. It's another report. It's not one that's, uh, on your table right now.
She came at twelve twenty this afternoon through our email.
You know, if they were gonna send that, if you're gonna send it at twelve twenty and we have a meeting that, that evening, make sure that, uh, the secretary at least called everybody to let them know, to alert them, that there's an, uh, uh, important email that has been issued.
You can note it. Thank you, ma'am. I'll make sure.
Thank you.
So if anybody have questions, I'll, I'll be happy to take your questions on email, uh, through the superintendent's office, uh, in the next couple of days if you, if you want to, uh, ask them, or we're happy to discuss them. But we, we very much look at them as, as our opportunities to, uh, and, and almost our goals as a department for, for next year. Um, our goal, of course, is to, uh, get rid of all of those, and, uh, we made great progress this year and we'll make more progress next year.
Great.
Can I ask you a question, Paul, in reference to the improper recording of state and financials? I mean, the federal aid?
Yes.
Doesn't that go through treasurer's office?
Yes, it does. So the treasurer's office receives these, uh, wires. They're, they're effectively wire transfers in from the state. And, uh, based on the description that comes with the wire, they are supposed to put it into certain accounts. Uh, they did not put them into the proper accounts. Uh, and it's our responsibility to monitor that they're doing that, that correctly. And, uh, we did, we can make improvements in doing that monitoring, uh, working with the treasurer's office to get those reallocated to the proper.
But it's their job to put it, put the information.
Yes, ma'am.
Lack of filing timely statements of economic interest, interest. Certain employees and elected officials?
Yes. So as you all know, as board members, uh, and, uh, we know as administrators, in certain positions within the district, we need to file a statement with the county of whether we have any economic interests in any business that does business with the board. And, uh, that we, we do individually. Uh, there were a few statements of economic interest from the, this is a new finding. I haven't encountered it before. There were a few individuals that, um, did not file. Uh, the auditors picked it up. I've never seen them look at it before. There were a number of, um, former administrators that were still on our list. We need to update our list so that it's, that it's current. And then there was, um, another individual that should have filed and is still involved with the district, and, um, they haven't filed it. And that auditor is just pointing that out.
Have we, have, well, we're the only elected official, but that's, that's, because I know I have to file three times because of, due to three different boards, but. We, I mean, we filed, we filed, right? So I, I guess, who, did, did any elected officials not file, or is this a certain employees, any elected officials?
I believe there was one elected official that didn't file, um, and we need to, uh, work through the superintendent's office to, uh, clear that up.
Who was that, Doctor? No, I, you, you don't have to answer, but I, I just know that if we're talking about elected officials, we are elected officials.
One of us.
Huh?
I'll, I'll look into that and get back with you.
It's one of us. Didn't file one time.
On the board didn't file?
Yep.
Well, I filed. Let the record reflect that I did file my statement of economic interest.
We know it.
In reference to the technology and data security risk assessment and management. Can you just elaborate a little bit on that?
Um, I can't elaborate on it. It's, it's a, it's kind of a standard, um, uh, disclosure at this point because there's so many data breaches and things like that. I think there, there's a, there's a constant risk, uh, cyber risk, if you will, and we need to, uh, be vigilant of our, our insurer. Um, we have a cyber liability insurance policy. Our insurer, um, does a great job of providing us with professional development opportunities uh, to, to try to mitigate that risk, but there are. But there are always attacks. And as a matter of fact, Titan Technologies at one point earlier in the year, that's the vendor for Infinite Visions, did get hacked. They do not believe that any district information was compromised.
Where it says lack of control over student activity collection. So is that like when we have the Christmas tournament?
Yes, that's us training our people that are responsible for sponsoring various student activities on the collection process. We greatly improved that this year. It went from a significant risk last year to a minor risk this year. We are, we had planned pre-COVID to do some training on that with our sponsors, and we didn't have a chance to get to it. Rest assured, we will get to it this coming year.
Have all of the staff that would be involved with Infinite Vision, have they all been trained, has everyone been trained with Infinite Vision, which is a new system?
We have had multiple training opportunities, and some staff participated in that. We kind of tracked that and made sure that we went out one-on-one and met with individuals or small groups of individuals to train them. Last year, Infinite Visions was new to us.
Right.
And we were, when I got here, we were probably a bit behind in the training, and we wanted to catch them up. We actually had to get payroll up and going from a bit of a deficit. Got payroll up and going. Then after the first of the year, once we knew we had an operable payroll system, we pivoted to the general ledger system and created thousands of accounts and things like that that probably should have been done prior to that. But again, Ms. Miller and I were coming from behind on that. We created those and provided.
So you guys put something in place?
Huh?
You guys put something in once you got here?
Yep, once we got here, we put it in place. At that point, a lot of the training opportunities were gone, and so we met with staff one-on-one, individually, small groups, as requested. Our goal was to get people comfortable with an electronic system. They'd been completely paper-based prior to that.
Right.
And so I feel we did a good job doing that. But we can also improve the efficacy and efficiency of the system going forward. We've been doing a lot of work on requisitions for that right now, and see that as an opportunity also to continuously improve.
Well, I just want to commend you for getting that together because I actually was in a Infinite Vision training, and two oh nine came up, and I could crawl underneath the table. I'd never identified, except Stewards Consulting were who I was, or that I actually, but the comments were not nice. As a matter of fact, I don't even think they were, thought you guys would be up and moving.
Right. We had a lot of concern addressed to us when we first got here that we were way behind where we should have been, and worked very hard to.
Well, that's good.
To get up and to basically get nobody noticed, which is nice. There was, it was a bit chaotic here for a bit, but we got it done. And Ms. Miller really deserved a lot of congratulations.
Congratulations both.
And the whole business office.
That was a big ordeal, just in case the board didn't know, that the training for Infinite Vision and the changeover system was huge in trying to get people to get trained and attend immediately.
Thank you. Any other questions? Well, as I said, if you have any questions and want to email, you know, put those questions through the superintendent's office. We got to get back to you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Are we going through these action? Are these combined as if this was a?
No, we need to move forward on the vote on that.
Okay, so we're just gonna, we're gonna vote for, this is gonna be like the, what's it called on the regular agenda? It's gotta be four, the consent, is this like a consent format?
No, it is not.
Okay. So we're at item number?
Eight.
Are they gonna be individual presentations? Or are we just gonna go through the list and vote and deal with that during discussion?
Just we'll.
Right, okay, great. Then I'll just go through these and entertain the motions, and if anyone has any questions, we can do that during discussion. Is everyone understanding what we're, do you guys understand what we're about to do? Because it's what we did. Okay, I understand.
It's just the audit.
Got you, okay. Then I'll start with, can I get a motion to approve the audited financial statements for fiscal year 2020? Discussion? Ms. Grant, please call the board.
Ms. Grant, aye. Mr. Valduras?
Aye.
Mr. Wagner?
Aye.
Mrs. Kelly? Ms. Matina? Ms. Harrison?
Aye.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye.
Mr. Currie?
Can I get a motion to approve the facility master plan demolition work?
All right, he's gonna present it to you first.
Okay, that's what, okay, that's what I was asking. That's what I was, okay, okay, I'm sorry. I was about to travel and walk up. Okay, at this time?
Yes.
Good.
So good evening, board.
Good evening, good evening, sir.
It is exciting to bring to you Sequence Two dot two work. The bid got open on December ten. Your pain is here to go over the presentation with you. And if you have any questions, let us know.
Good evening, everybody, good to see everybody.
Good evening, sir. Happy holidays.
So we, we have started opening bids. Actually, we hope, we have two bid openings, and we have the last one tomorrow, which is gonna be a major bid opening as well. There's just, there are too many bid packages to do at one time. What I'd like to do today is bring the most, the bid packages from the first two, partially from the second one. Some of the bid packages that we want to get started, because of long lead equipment. Give me a second, I should go down there. So as you can see, we have one, two, three, four, five, we have six packages that we are presenting today. And this is just a recap. If you want to get more detail on detail breakdowns behind this. But we had the demolition of the stadium. Again, let me back up. There's three bid packages, basically, the stadium work at East, there's the school work at East, and then of course, all the work at West. So this is the demolition of the stadium work, for the stadium work, which is the demolition of the existing auto shop, the stands, the bleachers, and all of the actual structures of itself. You see, we had six bids. Low bid is a hundred and six thousand four hundred dollars in national wrecking, and that will make the recommendation to award to national wrecking. And again, I had a breakdown of all the bids behind us to be able to look at those details. The stormwater retention system, that's also known as Storm Trap. If you remember some of the photos from the east, north parking lot, that was that big concrete structure that got buried underneath the parking lot itself. That's for stormwater retention. We had one bid, the amount of five hundred and twenty-eight thousand and twenty-six dollars. We weren't surprised that we only had one bid. That's kind of a specialty item. And Storm Trap is the, basically purses all across the nation. We tried to get on the bids, but we couldn't be able to compete against them. The next item is the curtain wall at West. The low bidder was three F of the three bidders, so the amount of three hundred and eighteen thousand dollars even. Then mechanical piping at West is mechanical ink. We had six total bids. This is a very large package, it's three million, three hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars. This is actually the hydraulic piping. Mechanically, a lot of times we've been, in the mechanical bids, we will bundle the piping side along with the sheet metal side. We split those up to try to get more interest, more bidders. So this is strictly the hydraulic piping that feeds their handling units, the chillers, and of those other items. Below that then, you see mechanical duct work. Again, that's the other half of it. We again had six bids, MG Mechanical, the low parent bidder, at one million, one hundred and twenty-two thousand four hundred dollars. And lastly, at West was the electrical. Austin Electrical, the low bidder out of four bidders, at six hundred and seventy-three thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars for a total of award at this time of six point, six million, one hundred and forty-two thousand, seven hundred and seventy-six dollars. And as I said, if you want to look at individual detail. I'm not sure how, do you see that on the screen? You need to pull that up here.
No.
Well, it says it happened, okay, thank you. So again, this is the detail that shows all of the bid breakdown, the individual package that we're talking about. So it shows all the bidders, the dollars, whether or not they acknowledge all the supplements. We scope reviewed all of the low bidders, making sure that the scope of work was in line. You know, you can get a big variance in price sometimes, so you know, we need to question that, make sure that the bid, the contractors can actually do the bid, and there are no issues or problems going forward later on. Unless there's specific question to that, what I'd like to show you is the last page. There you go. So what this shows is what our estimates were for that scope of work and what the bid results, the low bid results. You can see all, the total of our estimate based on the issue for bid document, which was eight million, seven hundred and ninety-five thousand, five hundred and eighty-one. The bids actually came in at six million, one hundred and forty-two thousand, seven seventy-six, or a delta of two million, six hundred and fifty-two thousand, eight hundred and five dollars. So the market is very competitive right now, which is great. As the recipient of those strong bids, you're getting more bang for your buck right now. I think a lot of that has to do with COVID. The contractors are very, very hungry. So we're doing very good on the estimates, on budgets. Again, this is just partial of the overall bids. We're gonna get a lot more bids that we'll bring back in January, the rest of the bid packages for the rest of the board media at that time. All total, this whole package for next year is estimated at about thirty-five million dollars. So you can see this is just a portion of it. Now with that, I'll ask you if there's any questions about this individual bid, so bidders. We did have one bid, let me bring this to you, just so you follow this. The asbestos-containing material remediation. We did have only one bid. In going through the scope review, they didn't really have the scope right, and so we threw those bids out. We are repackaging all of those bids. We will bid those, that asbestos bid back in early part of January. So it's the only anomaly that we had during the bidding process, and it just, the scopes were not clear enough to the bidders. We had eight people looking at it, we only had gotten one bid. We had it from the company Husar, who's done. A lot of the ACM remediation for the district's already. And going through the scope, it was evident that he didn't understand how he attacked this bid, so I said, okay, he can't, you know, he was not gonna be able to do it. He sent us a lot of requesting that we withdraw this bid, which we did. And so I said, we'll just go back out on the street, make sure we get good bids, get those contractors back in front of, you know, looking at the scopes, do a mandatory walkthrough, making sure there's no misunderstanding. So we'll get those bids in early January.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, good thing, I mean, they've been, since I've been here, they're the ones that always get the best for the asbestos, as far as I know the name on it.
Yeah, they're very.
I'm surprised in the day when I look at this, this combo work, being here for four years, which is a good catch-hanger, so I think.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, no, that, we were, they did the ACM at Memorial Hall on that day, so we're very happy with them, they're a great contractor. I'm just glad we realized, recognized that the bid was not correct. Nobody wants to put somebody under a bonded project, because then they have a problem. No one's here to put anybody out there, so of course.
Sir, a question, do we, and I don't know if this is appropriate, with the MWRD, and I'm looking at possible, what, stormwater detention bid and demolition, anything up there that we bid it that requires that type of approval like we've had before with the parking lots?
Everything at the stadium requires that approval.
Okay, everything does?
Yeah.
And have we, have we began that process prior to, are we ahead of that this time? So we don't have to stand and pick up?
Yes, we are.
Okay.
And stands, right now today, we don't have the approval, so companies will be spent until we have the approval in hand.
Correct, okay.
You know, this is a, I wanted to ask it halfway last time.
No, I think we did, but we're with you.
Thank you.
We're with you. We're with you.
Good question, huh?
And one more quick question. So the two million, six hundred and fifty-two that we saved in this bid package, based upon estimates, where does that go?
It goes, it goes back into the program, is used for other item changes.
And what is it called? So what is it called, Dr. Henderson, the contingency? Is that what I'm looking for, the contingency? How are we looking on contingency funds at this stage of the?
Allowances.
Allowances.
Allowances and there's contingencies. We have allowances built into the program like we have in the past.
Right.
So we have that there. Typically, the savings, like that two million or whatever the savings are, we would set that aside as your contingency. And this guy, it's there, it's yours. It's sitting there just in case something really goes awry, so that, you know, you're just, you're that, the program is safer in doing that. You don't want to say, oh, we got two million, let's go spend it right now. It's too relieved for them to do that. At the same time, we have allowances left in Sequence One that are just starting to come back into, back into the program as well. Overall, the budgets and the program financially is in good shape. And I hope after tomorrow, I can say the same thing.
Great. Thank you.
Certainly. Any other questions?
Any questions, sir?
No questions, sir. All stepped in. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We can move forward and approve this collectively for impact.
Yeah, I think that's what I was asking, to package it.
Right, right.
You know, that's a little, because if I was going to approve each one. Okay, so I'm gonna make the motion then. Okay, so we've gone over everything except, did you want to review the policy manual updates before we bump that in? And then once we do that, then I can just, because we've covered everything else.
Very good. You can go ahead, Ms. Grant.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
The policy manual update that you had before you for this evening is for Policy Six two eighty, which is grading and promotion. And what is being proposed here this evening is that a minimum grade of fifty percent or the equivalent based on the point value of the assignments be utilized in all assignments that are not part of either competency-based education or mastery-based education classrooms, supervisory east, supervisory west, respectively. The basic idea behind this, of course, is that the district upholds the idea and the expectation that students are gonna complete assignments. That when teachers assign the work, if it's important enough to assign, it's important enough to do. And so we certainly want our students to do that and to complete the assignments. But what we see from grading experts is this idea that when you have a grading scale that goes from zero to sixty, or zero to fifty-nine, for instance, for an F, and sixty to sixty-nine for a D, and seventy to seventy-nine for a C, and so forth. You have about a sixty percentage point gap to describe a grade of an F. You have about a 60 percentage point gap to describe a grade of an F. For our students who unfortunately are not completing their assignments or they haven't done their absolute best on it, what we can see in many cases is devastating impact of that zero or that low grade on their overall grade. So the general idea behind this is that the minimum grade would be a 50. That student who gets a 50 on all their assignments is still going to get an F in the class. But that student that gets a very low grade on one assignment that might be impacting their overall grade in the class, not just whether they get an F or not, but their grade point average in that class, how maybe it's the difference between a C and a B, the difference between a B and an A. It's a chance for that student to crawl back and to try to regain some of the ground that was lost without having to overcome a significant mathematical disadvantage in doing so. And so this is just one small component of an overall theory or philosophy about grading. Teachers by board policy, teachers by the Illinois School Code, are the ones to determine the grade that the student gets. They assess the student's work and they issue the grade. Policy 6280 indicates that the superintendent shall establish a system of grading and that system of grading is what is being described or modified here through this board policy. The idea would be that upon approval, this could be something that would be implemented with the start of second semester. Because there's, you know, there's no way really to do that at this stage with first semester grades and we're no way proposing that that happen with first semester grades.
Right.
Any questions?
I have a question at camera.
Go ahead, sir.
So my question is, so you mentioned, you know, the 50 would be the floor. Like if you did the work and it was just, you know, just not close to being, you know, passing level. Does this also apply to students who don't do the assignment at all?
That's what's being proposed now. So if you didn't do any of your assignments, you'd have a score, an average score of 50 versus zero. And you'd still get an F.
Yeah. And this would be my comment, because I looked at some of the references that, you know, came with the, behind them. And I strongly, I really agree with it. I think that, like you said, the expectation is that kids will do their assignments. And I think for the most part, that's what happens. And I think that if a student is not doing their assignments, it's a sign that there's something going on socially, emotionally, maybe something going on in the family. And might punish them for that. So I agree with this, yeah.
I want to thank you guys. This is the type of innovation and thought process that we have to have as adults moving forward. With the statements that I made at the last meeting, I know a lot of that stuff has been taken out of context and I have it on my phone, but this is exactly what I'm talking about, Doc, thank you. This is the type of stuff that's out here and is available, the research and the data and the, and the, what's that tough stuff called? The discretion of my vocabulary. What's the research called? It's a certain type of research, Doc. It's called?
Empirical data.
Uh huh, it'll come to me. But anyway, this stuff has been done and accomplished in other districts and other places in the country. And I think all that we're saying as a community and as a board is that we would like to see some of this innovative thinking and different ways and manners of helping rather than hurting and keeping doing the same old stuff that's not working. So thank you guys for this, for this great, great policy update. And I agree, Mr. Wagner, there's usually some other stuff going on with our scholars that we need to be looking at also.
Any other questions?
Okay, you can have it. If you would like, you can repeat really quickly what this policy thing is. We're gonna vote on it. But I really would like you to hear it first. So if you are, if you're already familiar with it, more, read it real quick. I don't want you to miss it.
No, I'm fine. That's okay. No need to repeat.
Thank you, sir. All righty then. Can I get a motion to approve numbers eight, nine, ten? Item numbers eight, nine, ten, 11, 12, 13, 14, and 15 on the agenda?
First you got eight, right? That was the other?
I'm sorry, scratch that. Let me restate the motion. We approved that one individual?
Yes, we did.
Yes, we did. Thank you, ma'am. Thank you.
Not a long time ago.
You know? All right then, let me restate the motion. Can I get a motion to approve items nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, and 15 on the agenda?
I'll move.
Second.
Ms. Grant, please call the roll.
Mr. Valtiras?
Aye.
Mr. Wagner?
Aye.
Mrs. Kelly?
Aye.
Ms. Patterson?
Aye.
Ms. Grant, aye. Mr. Alexander?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Great, old business? New business?
New business?
New business. With public comments, is it possible for us to receive a video from the person rather than them, than for them just to send in a comment? Can we see a video for 30 minutes, no longer than three minutes from them? Or can we receive a video from their phone? Which would be like, which would be no longer than three minutes? Or could we make, or can we set up here either a Teams or a Zoom so that they can come to us directly? Because I, you know, I just have a thing about comments coming in and we can't see the person. I'd rather see the person and hear that person and know, maybe I know that person. You know, rather than maybe getting some fictitious comments that are coming in, you know. So that's what I'd like for someone to help me with, please?
Yes, ma'am. We, I'm in talks with the attorney as of today. We'll be working on that and I'll get back with the board. As early as tomorrow.
We're still, Dr. Henderson, in phase where we can have up to 50, we can have up to a certain number of participants at the actual meeting. So we're not closed to the public right now.
That's correct.
So at any point in time that- Yeah, I think it's gonna be-
It's probably 10, but it's probably, we can let one in at a time.
Right, yeah, we can still have, we can still have people. So yeah, we'll, we'll talk and see.
Yes, sir.
But I'm better, you know, if they can come, fine. If not, I'd like to see a video. Because I'd like to see who is speaking to the board.
I think that's, I think that's fair.
And my next, my next question is, is it possible, if we have an agenda for a meeting, that we can receive this agenda prior to the meeting? I would love to have been able to go over some of this information and to digest it rather than coming here and it hits me in the face.
Do they know it, ma'am?
Thank you.
Any other new business? I would just like to wish everyone a happy holiday. I think this should be our last board meeting of the year. And once again, thank all of our stakeholders, auditors, Gilbany, Perkins and Will, and everyone that works with the district on all of the great work. I believe we've had a successful school year so far since the pandemic of March. And this, I know we're still in the year, but dealing with the calendar from a January to December, a successful year. And I just wish everyone the best and stay healthy. Any other new business?
Just, sorry, really quickly, I'm just wondering if in the end of the year communication or between now and the end of the year communication from the district to our families, can we just be outlining resources for them specifically? I mean, I can help with, you know, where to get food, but any other? I'm sure our social workers have a lot of resources that they know of as well. But if Congress doesn't act, a lot of people are going to lose their benefits at the end of this year.
That's right.
And our government is essentially pushing people off of the cliff. We're facing a humanitarian crisis in our own country. So I would just really like to see some kind of list of resources go out to all of our families in English and Spanish so that people who are kind of at the end of the road maybe have a few options of where to turn to.
Thank you so very much for that. Maybe four hours ago, we just had that meeting.
Okay.
We are addressing that.
All right, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
That's great. Because this break could be, could be a tough couple of weeks for some people.
Absolutely.
Any other new business?
New business?
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to take this opportunity to thank all of our students that have had to change their way of living as far as school is concerned and being a part of this whole e-learning thing. I know it is most difficult. I watch my own grandchildren deal with the e-learning. I would also like to wish you happy holidays to students and their parents. And I know this is a very difficult time for many. But again, happy holidays to the students and their parents. Happy holidays to faculty and staff as well.
Any other new business?
Yes, I'm here. I would just like to thank everyone, the host staff, students, the parents, anybody watching us. And I just wish everybody Merry Christmas and so on. Thank you.
I'd just like to say, this has been a very productive half of the year. And I'd like to thank everyone that has participated or helped in some way. I'm very proud of our accomplishments. And I'd like to also say Merry Christmas to all. Thank you.
Any other new business? If not, Ms. Grant, or I'm sorry, I was gonna say call the roll. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
I'll move.
Ms. Grant, please call the roll.
Sure, Ms. Kelly?
Aye.
Ms. Patterson?
Aye.
Ms. Grant, aye. Mr. Valtiras?
Aye.
Mr. Wagner?
Aye.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye.
You're adjourned.
You're adjourned.